We should get ourselves called to order here. We'll still short one trustee, but hopefully Matt will be able to jump in and join us here in a moment. So we are called to order at 7:02 PM.
Kathy's here. Right here. So I don't have to leave the meeting. Thank you, Kathy. Hi.
All right. After call to order, then we have additions. I do have one item that I wanted to add to the agenda for this evening, which was a little bit of a discussion on the timetable for returning to in-person meetings. So we'll add that under new business. Are there any other additions? Otherwise, we will go to our guest speaker this evening, Bettina O'Connell.
Hey, Eric, a possible addition. You sent an email around to all of us. Do we want to put that under new business as well?
We can. We could also discuss it under public comment. Before we get to the minutes, either works fine.
Whatever you prefer, doesn't matter to me.
Sounds good.
Okay.
What don't we do? What don't we do it under public comment? Okay. Not hearing any other additions. Bettina, I will turn things over to you. Bettina, of course, is the Village Finance Director and is with us this evening to talk a little bit about the audit and the results thereof. Bettina will also talk a little bit about the levy and the calculations that she does every year in terms of determining what the extension would potentially look like, particularly if we did PTAL, but also if we froze the CPI factor or held it steady. Okay. Bettina, and I think you have screen share ability. Let me make sure of that here, co-host. There we go.
I won't share until we get to the levy because the audit's fairly small and it's hard to read if I share it unless somebody wants me to put it up. I will, but anyhow, good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to join you tonight to review the library's 2021 fiscal year audit. The two documents that make up the audit are the Board of Trustees Communication and the Annual Financial Report. I'll be reviewing the audit processes, scope of services, management discussion and analysis to the financial statements and some GASB updates. So the audit looks to measure the library's services, resources and impact in the form of financials. The process this year was remote again. Sickage was on six has an online portal that allows for uploads of all requests remotely. To be transparent, the auditors have full access to the financial software online, just as an employee would. They can view any general ledger or accounts payable entry. And so since all accounts payable records require attached backup, they can also review invoices at will as part of their random testing efforts. So the first part of importance is the independent auditor's report, which includes discussion of management responsibility. The auditor's responsibility and the auditor is responsible for expressing opinions on the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting practices. And of course, their opinions and the audit received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level opinion that it could receive. Management Discussion and Analysis, or MDNA, is a key piece prepared by management. And that would be myself at the village in conjunction with Library Director Eric Bailey. MDNA provides contextual information to assist in analyzing and reviewing the financials and provides a great summary or snapshot. I'll focus on an overview that was provided in the MDNA. So annual report includes two government-wide statements. These statements provide long-term and short-term information about the library's overall condition. Financial reporting at this level uses accounting similar to full accrual accounting, similar to private sector. Interfund activity is eliminated and the cost of assets with long services are long life services is spread out over future years. So capital expenditures are amortized through the depreciation when benefits are realized. The first statement, the statement of net position that presents information of all the library's assets and liabilities with differences reported as in that position. Over multi-year period, an increase or decrease in that position can detect improvement or deterioration in the financial position of the library. And additionally, one would need to evaluate non-financial factors such as the condition of infrastructure, satisfaction of constituents and other information beyond the scope of financial reporting to get a full assessment of the library as a whole. The second statement is the finance is the statement of activities, which reports how the library's net position has changed during the current fiscal year. All current revenues and expenses included, regardless of whether cash is received or paid. And an important purpose of the design of the statement of activities is to show financial reliance on the library's distinct activities or functions on revenues provided by the taxpayers. So some financial highlights to get to numbers. The library's financial condition strengthened as a total as total net position of 2.05 million as of April 2021 increased $79,534 or 4% from 1.97 million as of April 2020. The unrestricted net position increased by 124,752 to 24726 from 115 and 974 in 2020. After depreciation expense, the net investments in capital of 1.8 million decreased 45 about 45,000, which is from the disposal of aged books or media in excess of the cost of new materials. Property tax revenues of 982,713, program revenues of 35,306 and other revenues of 16,833 were greater than the expenses of 955318, accounting for the increase in that position of 79,534. The net investment in capital assets is one is about 1.8 million, consisting of about a million in buildings, 314,000 in books and media and 347,000 in land value and 132 in furniture and equipment. So the library's fundable resources represented by the governmental operating unrestricted fund balance increased $46,047 or 13.9%. So this is a high-level overview of the financials, but overall, the library's net position has increased, which is good, especially given the recent financial challenges during the COVID health pandemic. Revenues did experience a loss of 10,267. However, expenses were lower, which is attributed to the facility closures during COVID. An overall fund balance increased $46,047 to 381,589. So lastly, our favorite part, the GASB pronouncements. There were no pronouncements that impacted information presented on the financials, except there was one pronouncement, that being GASB statement 95. And in essence, that pronouncement allowed for the delay of implementation of any GASB pronouncements. So GASB realized that COVID had an impact on staffing and they needed to give government entities a break and extended implementation deadlines and dates. So we'll look towards next year to see what new pronouncements there are. I think the only one that really may have an impact as far as the village or potentially the library is the one related to leases and that would be, we would need to depreciate leases as if they were capital assets. But in speaking with Erica Ready, I don't think there's anything material there. We certainly don't have anything at the village either, since we purchased most of our items. And I think the only lease we really have is a postage machine. So pretty nominal. But it also refers to leased leases that we gain revenues on. So that could apply to cell tower leases for us. And if there's anything that you lease, whether it be nominal or not, we'd need to include it in statements. So briefly also wanted to just give some updates on our auditors. So this is our last year in a contract with Sickage. And next month, I'm going to be going out for RFP to get some new contract responses. I did reach out to other communities and most people were in the middle of a four-year term and weren't interested in joining me except for one community. So I have Fox River Grove somewhat distant, but they wanted to join in. And I'll be putting out an RP with them to see what responses we get. It could be sick if their pricing comes down because they tend to be a little higher than some of the other auditing firms. So we'll see where that ends up. I'll certainly let you know where we're at and you know how that turns out. And that's, that's it. That's all I really have for the audit. Does anyone have any questions on the financials?
What does the audit cost?
Oh, so we don't break it out between library and village.
Okay.
But we break it on between village and water. And so the village portion of it is a little over 32,000 and that does not include additional reporting like you know, the GATA reporting for granting and the police pension reporting and the Division of Insurance report. So at the end of the day, we're about at 40 grand.
Okay.
Which is it's high when I've done comparative studies with other communities and what they're paying.
Yeah.
What sort of term do we do? We sign up for Bettina? Is that three or four years?
So it's been a four-year term that I've seen. And then most recently, when I started, we got an extension and they froze the increase for a year and then gave us a small increase for the following two years. So that those that term of three years is also up and they've had sick forever. So I mean, they're we're due for a change and they they're well aware.
Okay.
I mean, the only way that I would take them back is if the price were lower and they would provide us with an entirely new firm. So a new managing partner and a new group of people.
Okay.
So do you want me just to jump into levy, Eric? You're muted.
Go for it.
Yeah. If, if there's no further questions on the audit, then let's jump into levy.
Yeah.
Okay. I will share. That works. Everybody see that spreadsheet?
Yes.
So this is a spreadsheet that was provided in the packet to the village board. It's changed a little bit in regards to EAV that actually went down another 2 million and some change with a recent estimate that was received a last week from the county. So really all that does is increase this rate. The extension overall stays the same. And it just changes the dollars a little bit. So this was last year's extension and this is the portion the libraries received the 1,014,000. This is the extension with CPI. So the library would have 1,32728 and then respectively, no CPI in the freeze. And this year CPI was 1.4%. So the village has also agreed on the board and the finance committee recommended to go with CPI. So we're in the the screen column and I believe that's what Eric said would be the library's recommendation at well. Awesome. So then also wanted to share one other. Let's see if I can do this. Just start again. This is just familiar, common question. Can you see this spreadsheet?
Hmm.
Okay. So what's the impact to the extension on a typical home in Lake Buff? And by typical, I go by the median home market value, which this year was 6427700. So this is last year's and that the village portion of that textbook, which includes the library was the 159809. And with CPI, we're looking at a $50 and 35 cent increase with the EV that went down from 584 to 575. And that question from our village board, why did that, you know, why did that happen? Several years back, the assessor did an assessment and increased the commercial sector values substantially. And we saw a spike upwards. And since then, there have been a lot of protests and now we're rolling into that three-year look back period where those protests are applied and there are reductions in values. So we're kind of going back a little bit, but and there are also exemptions and homestead exemptions and some veterans exemptions that have increased when I look at the breakout of the EV. So that's what's driving that decrease as far as I can see, not necessarily that home values have gone down because as we know, the market's been a little bit crazy. It's just that look back to the commercial sectors that have gone down. So I just wanted to share that. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. That's my brief update. Thank you.
Thank you, Bettina. Any questions on the levy for Bettina?
No.
Okay.
Bettina, one question. What percent of the village library tax number that you gave us, what percent of that is the library? Is that can that be broken down?
Well, the the total extension is 4.5 million and some change in the libraries is a million. So you know, 25% of the extension.
Thanks.
Sure.
A quick follow-up question. Would that mean that the $50.35 per home, median value used that roughly to 22% of that would be to the library?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. Looks like that would be about 11 or $12 in between those two.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Bettina broke out there, the, the, the village and its component units, including the library portion of the levy. I believe all up. What's the percentage? What percentage of the levy now is that the village represents? I know that the library generally our portion bounces between 2 or 3% of the property tax levy bill.
Oh, so you know, every year I do that chart and present it at the hearing and we always fall into 9%. So I wouldn't imagine that it would change. It's about 9% of the of the tax bill.
Yeah. So all things, all things considered, we're you know, we want to be careful and thoughtful in what we do. You know, the, the reality though, too, is that, you know, the, the biggest chunk of the levy funds go other places. Schools are was the the, the biggest items there, District 65 and District 115.
Yep. Yeah, the library's increase, which I didn't, I don't know if you noticed it on the chart. So this year's increase would be $18,218. And the village actually, for a general fund, took a net loss because police pension levy increased. So even with CPI, we're actually general fund getting less money. So
That traces back to the levy freeze last year, I would imagine.
It contributes because it's compounding. So sure, there's going to be an effect of missed dollars that we could have seen from prior year, but I mean, the police pension levy went up about 100,000. So, so
That would be the big one.
Yeah. When you don't see the levy go up that much, you know, levy increased 62,000, there's a loss in general fund, you know, revenues.
Yeah. IMRF is much more fun to deal with.
It is.
Okay. Any other questions? If you do think of any other questions later, Bettina has always been incredibly helpful and very willing to work with us in terms of finding any answers that we need. So please let me know. I'll put you in touch with Bettina and you know, we'll, we'll get some answers if you've got a question.
Absolutely. Not a problem. Email me anytime.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bettina.
Sure. You're welcome. You're welcome. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So then our last item with the with the audit here would be to vote to accept the report. We don't actually have any control over the audit report. That's a big part of the point of doing the independent audit. We just vote to accept it and acknowledge that we have received it from our employed auditors.
I will move that we vote to accept it. We've obviously heard it.
Second motion, motion from Janie, second from John. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Audit is approved. And that will take us up then to our next item of business, which is the minutes for the October 19th board meeting. I read through and I don't have any questions or comments myself. Does anyone have anything that they would ask or add for the minutes? Excellent work as always, Bonnie.
Yeah.
If not, then I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion from Janie, second from John. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Minutes are approved. I suppose I should ask if anybody, anybody voting against. I didn't think so. Minutes are approved. Got a little ahead of myself there. Okay. That'll take us up to the October financial reports. And I will actually share over here to my computer screens that I can have those up here while I am talking about them. Okay. First item was one that we mentioned at the meeting last month.
Eric, can you make that a bigger?
I can. Is that better?
Yeah.
I go much bigger and it starts to squish stuff off of the sides. Last month I had mentioned that we had received another sizable contribution for the property tax that that had arrived and that is visible here in the 206,105,000. So that takes us up to 796 of the 1,014,000 that we had made a levy request for. I expect in the next month or so that we'll get another sizable contribution here. Quite possibly it's already arrived, but there's a little bit of a lag between when it gets there, the processing by the state and then it needs to be directed appropriately by Bettina over at Village Hall. Do also want to on the revenue draw attention to the $1,388 that we brought in in terms of passport revenue, which at exactly halfway through the fiscal year puts us at 111% budget for that revenue line. So we brought in $7,800, $800 and we'd only budgeted to receive 7,000. So that continues to go very well. And we have in Martha, Katie and Anna with us tonight, all, all of our passport agents who are always ready and willing to jump out for appointments when folks sign up. So they deserve a lot of kudos for all the hard work that they've put into that. And I would also highlight that we have very rarely heard back from anyone regarding any concerns about the applications that we work with folks to complete. So you know, I also feel very good that in addition to being you know, a great service to be offered to the community overall and a revenue source that you know, people who come in are receiving first-class passport service as well. We do good work. Okay. Moving down, last item that I have for revenue is this 4,170 and 58 cents. That's a donation from the friends. Actually, it's two donations from the friends. It's $2,000 for the miscellaneous programming fund. The, the friends had reviewed that. They had given us back in the before times in 2019, $2,000 to expend on just sundry programs. They always sponsor a few and they consider that would probably be easiest to put us in charge of that miscellaneous fund. We reviewed that last month. They felt that it worked very well and they opted to make another contribution renewing that. So that's $2,000 of it. The other $2,000 and change represents the friends contribution towards purchasing a new MacBook for the library, which was an important request that we had made. We specifically asked for that because our laptop that we have generally used for, you know, when we do AV, whether it's PowerPoint or displaying anything up on the screen downstairs, that, that laptop is getting a bit old and that's proven to be now that we're doing so much hybrid pro hybrid programming at times a real problem. We had a few real unfortunate hiccups over the summer as we were starting to get things moving with making use of that laptop and that setup where it just did not want to work with us. So that was a great and necessary change. The, the MacBooks have a good reputation for graphic design and we're hoping to get good mileage out of it for that as well. Okay. I know everyone, I know my staff is very excited about the MacBook. I'm not, I'm not a Mac user, so I'm a little bit more indifferent, but okay. Scrolling down, what was the next one that I had to bring to your attention here? Our big expense for the month is this $16,000 attached to exterior building improvements. This represents the final payment for the work on the parking lot. So all up that takes us to $20,621, which is pretty close to what we budgeted for at 20,000. So that is now all settled up. We'll see the, the check for that when we get to the register. So looking at the, the bottom line, we are 52.76% expended in terms of the, the budget thus far, which continues to be right where I would expect this to be.
Very good.
Eric, can you, can you go to telecoms for a second? Because I know that was a category we said was, was running light throughout the year. I just wanted to see what it looks like.
Which one?
Telecoms, the new telecoms provider.
Oh, the granite?
Yes.
Yeah, they'll be under utilities. I believe they came in at 374 here for this month. Let me scroll down here to checks real quick. No, they have definitely stabilized, which is appreciated. Yeah, there we go. 374 dot 37433.
Right. And so, so if you wouldn't mind going back to the utility line, they're one of a couple different vendors, if you will, suppliers in utilities.
Yep. The, the other one that's noteworthy there is the, the internet with Comcast. And then we do also get occasional, but not usually very large bills for water and sewer.
Okay. So the headers are gone, but I believe 4,627 is current year, 7135 is prior year. Year to date. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So yeah, and a, a big portion of the, the difference here between this year and last year is that granite bill.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Good questions, Bonnie. Okay. Any other questions, comments on the financial reports? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
I still move.
One second.
All right. Motion from Kathy, second from Bill. Finances. So we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Heinsohn.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trusty Hayes.
Hi.
And trustee Graziano.
Hi.
All right. We are approved. And that will take us down to the checks. Okay. Just a couple to draw attention to. October, November do tend to be heavier purchasing months in terms of acquiring materials for the collections. The, the reason being that publishers generally put out a lot of their materials in those months The, the reason being that publishers generally put out a lot of their materials in those months with a goal of getting them out and on the shelves as a hot new thing before people are doing deep into their holiday shopping. And then get to mid-November, things cool off substantially and won't really start heating up again in terms of book or DVD releases until after the holidays in January. So there's quite a bit, a bit here this month as a result for Amazon and Baker and Taylor, the standard. Colley Elevator Company draw attention to that one. That is our contract for elevator maintenance presently on quarterly inspections. So this trip out, I believe qualifies as our annual inspection and we will shortly be seeing someone out to confirm that everything is indeed in good standing and get us our new certificate that will be affixed to the elevator.
So Eric, are we quarterly or yearly inspections?
We're up to quarterly. The reason being that the elevator is a little bit, is a little bit older. So it was recommended and working with Colley, we were able to get a contract that it was pretty comparable either way, whether it was four times a year or twice a year. Also a building service. You'll probably notice that we have two builds this month from Crystal Maintenance. The $250 was the cost of a special cleaning. Where we got a hold of Crystal Maintenance, there was an incident at the library that required a professional to come out and clean up some of the carpeting. One of the things that I do very much appreciate with Crystal is that whenever we've needed to call them for that, as previously this year, when we had somebody throw up on our carpeting, which was not what happened here, but it was a previous call. They are routinely very quick to get out here. I believe the throw up incident, they were out that afternoon. And for this one, we had called them in the evening and they were out later that night. So they respond very quickly and we've been pretty satisfied with the, the timing and the results on that. So.
You know, weren't you thinking of replacing them there for a while? I, I thought that I remember a discussion about that you felt that the, their, the quality of their work had fallen off and you were looking at possibility.
We we had earlier in 2021, a few weird. It was about a month or so of what I would call weird, weird service where they were just not reliable. Whether there were things that got missed. And some things along that line. What we, what we did before we, you know, went out to, through the formal process of bidding, because it would have been in the middle of a contract. And basically just gave them the full list of, you know, look, we've got concerns. Here's, here's what we're not seeing from you. And to their credit, they did address it.
Good.
So which, you know, made it instead of a need to switch contracts, something that will, you know, keep in mind that it was a thing that happened.
I, I just was wondering about that because having them come when you need them in a more or less emergency situation, that is a that's a valuable trait for us to keep.
Yeah. I mean, particularly as sometimes happens when the cleanup that needs to be cleaned is in a very high traffic area. I mean, it's you know, if, 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 if somebody's you know, unfortunately for all involved, you know, going to make a mess in the library, it's always preferable that it's off in a corner somewhere where it can maybe throw some baking soda on it and you can cope versus, you know, right in the main pathway going into the building where people kind of have to walk past it as they're coming in. No. That's been very helpful how quickly they've responded when we've had to call them. And that said, I am totally okay with calling them last next year for that. One of those services that you're glad they have, but don't want to make too much use of. Okay, the, we mentioned the, we talked about the granny telecommunications on the utilities that came in at 374. That definitely seems to have stabilized, which is great. And then the other and last check that I have is for the Peter Baker and Sons, the exterior building improvements. And that's the 16,000 and actually I almost forgot you, the Ravinia Plumbing, which was for some work on our sump pumps. But they had identified that one of the units had an old battery that needed replacing and the, the other one I think was mostly, the machine itself was mostly replaced. Because it's of how old it had been. And we know unfortunately from experience that you don't want to have those get in a position where they might be close to their service deadline. Those are all the checks I've got. Do I have any questions about checks?
We have two sump pumps.
Yes. Well, technically we have three.
I ask is
we have
The reason I ask is we just replaced our sump pump. And in doing so, I kind of read the fine print. I guess for our insurance company and now the homeowner it is, is compensated for a loss if the sump pump is properly maintained. It's different wording than in the past blanket coverage. So people do have to be aware of their battery situation. So I'm glad we're up to date and we get to make a note of that in some conspicuous place. So that's always kept up to date.
Yeah, we've got, we've got two that are the primary sump pumps for the, the building, a primary and a secondary. When the water starts coming in to quick, the, the secondary one kicks in to, to support. And, and the third one that we've got is at the bottom of the elevator shaft. Okay. Yeah. Some pumps, important thing. Okay. Any other check questions? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the checks.
I still move. One second.
Motion from Bonnie, second from Janie. Another financial approval. So we will do a roll call vote. Trusty Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trusty Heinsohn.
Aye.
Trusty Shaw.
Aye.
Trusty Church.
Aye.
Trusty Hayes.
Aye.
And trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Checks are approved. Okay.
Eric, can we go through a, a vote on the financials? I have Kathy motioned, Bill seconded the financial reports, but I don't know if we did a round the horn.
Good.
We did. I think we, we did.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Cause we did at least one other roll call vote this evening, and I don't think there's anything else on the agenda that.
We did the audit reports.
But that, that was not individual. I don't think.
No. Cause it wasn't, didn't relate to any finances themselves, just accepting the report. So the really awesome thing about, about these meetings is that since this is recorded, you can check it out on the website because Jillian will have it ready to go up here before too long. Should be sometime tomorrow.
We do have one other note, which is the public comment piece. I think we passed on the agenda, but didn't talk about that now.
You're right. Why don't we tackle that then as new business since we missed our opportunity under public comment? Thank you for reminding me, Bonnie. I did miss that. Okay. We are now up to our committee reports. And per my notes, we have four committees that met building and grounds, finance, HR and intergovernmental agreement. So building and grounds.
Okay, that was on November 1st. And what we did was we looked at the schematics for this, of this, the Stroll reading room. And that included where the furniture would be placed, what kind of a door we would put in, what kind of fireplace, the installation of, of possibly a computer monitor or a TV monitor and so on and so forth. For those of us who, whoops, I just lost everybody there.
No, I can see you now.
Okay. We had what I thought was pretty clear was what we all liked the best. And it's just a matter of getting down to details. Next time we need to actually pick out furniture finishes and so on and so forth. Then let's see, for the capital resource study, Angberg Anderson wants to have a study of existing infrastructure. And so we talked about the possibility of doing that. There is a cost to the service of doing that. It's $7,500 and it's updated about every 10 years. The advantages include planning ahead and justifying a capital fund increase going forward. And so that would be an action item for us to discuss. And actually, we, we spent a good, a fair amount of time discussing that because we've already talked about putting together a list of things that need to be done, but especially with Lindy retiring, who knows the building inside and out. We, we thought that to have somebody who's a professional at doing this sort of thing would be very much worthwhile. They might pick up on some things that we haven't picked up on and, you know, future planning for major expenses that might be upcoming is always a good idea. And Eric felt that the money for paying for something like that could come from a budget somewhere. It's not a must do in the next five months, so it could be put off for the next fiscal year, but that's something we're going to have to think about. So the, the committee decided to do a budget review and talk to the finance committee about this before we before we approved anything. By the way, Melissa Williams has done a great job with the friends because they have decided to donate funds for the fireplace, I believe. Is that correct? Yes. And we went through a whole load of minutes because we'd had a whole bunch of meetings. And, and then let's see. The only other thing that came up was that several years ago, we got a state construction grant of $100,000 and we have yet to see any of that money. Kathy was going to contract Brad Schneider to see if we can push the issue and possibly provide a list of what we've already done so that he will see that we've we're not just sitting on our hands with improvements to the library. Eric was going to do a a list of allowable expenses and to see if maybe a new generator could qualify because that's something else that we talked about is, is you know, we had come up with that several years ago, the possibility of getting a generator and it kind of got tabled and it's something that we should consider doing. So Owen, Bonnie, Bonnie and some other staff went to the Deerfield Library and looked at their physical plant and that was about it for the building and grounds.
All right. Janie, thank you.
Welcome.
All right. And
Maybe I can clarify that grant background a little bit that I can remember. We were granted a $100,000 construction. There's a name for the program that Eric would, would recall. As yet we haven't received, well, actually we haven't really drawn out yet. It's cumulative up to $100,000 of lots of building improvement type expenses that would qualify. For example, the I would guess the parking lot would be something that might be considered. So what we need to do is put together all of our expenses and really make sure that we have all that over the last three or four years. And we've been very patient as everyone has been with the state, but I think the time has come to, you know, make a little more noise. It is a state funded grant. However, Congressman Brad Shaw, Brad Schneider has been very helpful to throughout his municipality. So he would be, does someone whose door we can knock on his, his staff is very quick to respond to requests. So I think that he would be informative and helpful. So anyway, we need to get working on that. So, and it came up with finance too, that we want to get that document up to date and ready to circulate. And also it's, I think it's good for our potential donor base to know that we're aggressively pursuing any funding that we are entitled to. So Eric, I know you're working on that, but I think we set a pretty close deadline on getting that wrapped up.
Yeah. I, I did go and take a look back at my last communication with Senator Morrison's office six months ago. So they had at that time said that they were expecting that the state was waiting for a favorable bond market. In order to in order to put out the, the bonds that they needed to put out to fully fund the rebuild Illinois bill, which you know, even if we don't end up with any funds from the the brick infrastructure bill that was just passed, you know, that might still result in some good things because I would imagine that would probably have a positive effect on the bond market. Public works often do. That's my understanding. So we'll see. I, I will follow up and see again if there's any, any motion and certainly any, any time here would be good.
But is this money that was going to come from a new bond offering?
Yes.
Okay.
That seems to be that we might be waiting a while before our state reading goes up. Issue more bonds.
I thought this was revenues from the marijuana sales.
My understanding was that that was going to be part of the funding for the rebuild Illinois. The, the last email that I got from from Senator Morrison's office stated that the office, I can just read it to you here. The authorization will come from the governor's office of management and budget. I think they'll need to have a favorable bond market before authorizing the bond sale, which in turn would enable the release of the capital bill grant funds. At least that's been the sequence of events in the past. Let us know if there's anything else we can help with related to this or otherwise.
There also was discussion about monies would be dispersed in the order in which these were queued up. So we need to make sure that we are absolutely up to date and in line and we're pursuing this aggressively from our end.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on the grant from the state? Otherwise I think we're up to finance.
Okay. Finance committee met on the eighth and then kind of continue what Jeannie was talking about the from buildings and ground. We sort of looked at the electrical assessment as waiting till March, April timeframe, see how the budget has been for the year. Since it's not a high priority, we'll see. high priority, we'll see what money we would move into the, into different funds. So, so, so sort of in a holding pattern till March, April time. The other thing is, and we, we had recommended, and obviously we talked about this earlier, taking the, the levy and taking the, the max amount in there. So, that's going forward. The other thing that was in discussion, and this is something Eric, you were gonna follow, you know, follow up for, for policy changes, the fine review, looking at what that would need to, to be and how it would be reflecting in there. We had looked at, you know, how much, I mean, the much budget the fines were generating, what local libraries around us, I think we had Lake Forest, Cook Memorial, Deerfield and Northbrook all are fine free. And I think Highwood was the only one that we were thinking that they were the, the only ones doing fines at the time. So, again, looking at policy change there to bring that up to the board. That's kind of things in a nutshell. I think I've covered everything. Kathy, was there anything else you can think of that was, that we had covered? I think that's covered on your meeting.
Right, thanks. Very good.
One last thing, I know it's not part of the finance, but we did have them go to see Prospect Heights. Myself, Jillian and Katie went down there. Each of us have generated our own sort of reports. Jillian and Katie have got a lot of pictures. We'll put some together to sort of share, but some, some interesting things. They've just gone through a big renovation. They spent about $5.2 million and, and had closed the library and opened up again. Obviously, they did a nice job with, with the renovation, but a bigger library than us, obviously, but.
Yeah. Bill, did they, did they say what their source of funding was?
It was through the taxpayers. What they had done is they had bonds out that they, they had paid off. And rather than reducing that tax basis, they continued on with that same amount. So, they had built up their own capital fund to pay for it over the course of the, the time. So, it was, yeah, it was a big improvement.
If I, if I can also piggyback, Billy, you just talked about a recent library visit. Last week, Liza, Martha, LaRoz and myself visited Northbrook and I didn't ask about their library fines, but I suspect Eric, you might know if they, if they are charging fines any longer.
Or not.
Okay, thank you. And they, they did receive an ARPA grant, American Rescue Plan Act. And there was also something else that they called, again, my notes, I just issued my notes to the team today to have them built upon. I want to say it was called an ECI grant, if that makes sense to anyone. It was one of the things that I actually called out in the notes to ask the team to.
Are you talking about the T-Mobile ECF grant?
There you go. Thank you, Eliza. Yes.
Yeah, they used the ECF grant to get Chromebooks and hotspots, which is a pandemic thing. And I need to follow up and see if those are still available. Sorry, Bonnie, as you were.
Thank you. No, no, that's exactly the kind of jump in I was looking for. So, yeah, beautiful library. My gosh. Expansive, just the number of study rooms, meeting rooms, 250 person auditorium, self-checkouts. It's kind of, you know, state of the art and really a place that the community doesn't just drop in and leave with circulation materials, but really, really uses to connect and learn and you know, I, I share some of the sentiments that came in the email that Eric shared, which was sort of like, oh my gosh, I hadn't, I didn't really have a good appreciation for what a lot of the libraries offer beyond it offer in terms of kind of space. And there was also, they have Makerspace, Bill, I don't know if the place that you visited recently, yeah.
They did. They had 3D machines. They had some printing, some sewing machines, you know, different crafts that people could do, glass etching. And but, but again, yeah, they, they made use of the, of the excellent lighting as well. And the same thing, they had self-checkout system, a very, a very easy way of doing the self-checkout. And they were also working on an app where you could check out on your phone.
Yeah, yeah, same, same for Northbrook. So, I, you know, kind of my, my takeaway was, wow, you know, our library does so much in terms of programming and community support. But I think the, the kind of physical footprint, which is kind of funny, right, being on building, building and grounds, I'm like, the physical footprint is so limiting in terms of the additional things maybe from, you know, study rooms, meeting rooms. And I think about how more people are gonna be working from home as employers have started to get more comfortable. And gosh, I can tell you, I, you know, pandemic aside, you know, the days when my neighbors lawn, lawn services are coming through or, you know, people have cleaning services, maybe you want to evacuate. Gosh, wouldn't it be nice if, if there was a little more space available at our own library? So.
You just have to keep in mind that Northbrook is a much larger community.
Yeah, yeah, 33,000.
Yeah.
6,500, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Even, even Prospect Heights, their operating budget was probably over three times what, what Lake Bluff is and, and a much bigger footprint. It's obviously, you could do a lot with $5 million.
That's right.
Yeah, the, even with the disparity as far as space available and funds available, I do feel, I also led a couple trips out mine to Wenecan Northfield and to Indian Trails. You know, definitely still feel like there was always been things that we've taken away from, from all of these in, in terms of opportunities to do things more efficiently. You know, things that people are looking for, those sort of things. So, we, we might never be, we might never be Northbrook, but we can be the best Lake Bluff library that we can be.
And that, that was sort of interesting, like Prospect Heights. I mean, you don't have that same sort of community thing because they're, they're in a much busier area. So, you couldn't have the book by type of setup because you could get hit by a car running, you know, zipping through the neighborhood. So, there's a lot of, you know, there's things that, that we have that other people don't have.
In my, you know, in, in Northbrook, my, which is a big, beautiful library, but I would say my primary feeling anytime that I visited there would be a sense of awe when I, when I come in. You know, it, it doesn't, you know, really evoke community the way I think our smaller library does. Not that I wouldn't take their space in a heartbeat, but.
Small but mighty.
Try to be.
That building was built on the location of an old ice rink. Did you know that?
I did not know that.
Yeah.
I do know that for about 10 years after that was built, that Deerfield just about herniated itself, trying to find some way to build something that was better.
Yeah, I'm not surprised.
No, the ties into the technology committee, of course, where we kind of got sidetracked here. So, this will be our tech committee report too. But the, the visits have been very informative. So, looking forward to pulling that together. I think most all the teams have met now have made their visits. Okay. Anything else on finance, Bill?
No, I think we, those are the, the main things.
Okay. I think that takes us up to HR. Yes.
Oh, okay. That would be me, but I don't have the minutes because I think that was the meeting that I totally forgot about.
Jenny, if you want me to talk about it.
Sorry.
Do you want me to talk about it a little bit?
Would you, Jenny?
Yeah, no, of course.
Since I don't know what to say.
No, and I'm sorry too, because I think I was distracted during that meeting. So, I think Kathy and John really were the ones that, and Eric were the ones that led the discussion. But, um, we really had, I think, two main points of discussion for the HR committee. One was that we've had a few staff that Eric told us about a few of the staff that have left the library. And so we had a, one big point of discussion was increasing salaries to make them more competitive with other libraries around. So, we talked about increasing the starting salary from like, for library assistants from $12 to $15 and library associates from $14 to $17. So, and I think, I think the committee was all in agreement that that sounded like a good idea. Eric, I think you had mentioned that you don't, you don't actually need approval from the committee to do that, but you wanted to discuss it with the board.
Yep. The, the reason that it's, it's possible for us to do this right now is that we have additional flexibility with our staffing resources because we had a retirement earlier this fall. So, we're taking advantage of that to get ourselves in a good position in, in terms of where our salary base is starting.
So.
So, yeah, Jenny, you're, you're absolutely right. It doesn't, because it's, because it's fiscally neutral and we aren't creating any new positions, it doesn't require a vote. But, you know, as with anything that represents a, a shift, you know, I always like to keep the trustees appraised of what we're doing.
Yeah.
Well, and these rates, the new rates puts, puts more in, in line with other libraries.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Have you had any luck with reposting the position with the new salaries?
You know, not as much as I, as I had hoped. The, the job market overall is pretty tough.
It's very strong.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I think just the, the nature of things right now is that, you know, we're not likely to get, you know, the, the big trove of applications that we've gotten sometimes in, in past years and just working on limiting, you know, the factors that would, you know, potentially deter applicants. So, we're gonna get it filled. That's the important thing.
Good. I think the other main point of discussion, and I think Kathy has more about this, was about the mid-year director's review. I think Kathy had sent an email to all of us that she had more to talk about at this meeting. So.
Yeah, the, thanks Jenny. The, once again, we're behind in our mid-year director's review. As many of you may remember, we kind of revised the evaluation form, I should, with the amazing help of Patricia Brackett, who did a great questionnaire that fed into the review. They said an American system is wonderful. And what, what was missed by everybody involved was the last step of that was that the goals of the director would be kind of formed in conjunction with the committee goals that would be formed with the new fiscal year, which in this case was, this year's case was a whole lot of new trustees. And so, real, real committee reorganization. So, we got off to a good start with committees and goals. And Eric, of course, following up with each committee and doing those, but he really never brought the board's attention, you know, three primary goals sort of a thing. So, it's, it's a technicality, but it does influence how we conduct the mid-year review. So, typically, he would have sent his goals to you. You guys could respond to me or to Eric. It's a kind of perfunctory mid-year, but it's, it's a guide. And then, of course, it would continue as the year went on. So, that's the stuff that we missed. So, rather than kind of fumble around, I just thought, let's just put it on hold and talk about this meeting. So, I think the, the best thing to do is, I mean, just listening to this litany of committees and everybody's engaged and working hard and definitely on track and on what they're doing. I would just encourage you all as trustees to reach out to me or to Eric in the next couple of weeks. If you have questions or concerns, share them and then Eric and I can sit down and Eric, I should look at the calendar, maybe like the second week of December before things start to get too crazy, but let's make sure we had that conversation before the new year. And then we will follow up with you guys hopefully at that December meeting. And are we meeting in December? That's a whole other issue. We gotta look at that calendar. So, anyway, just to, you know, to keep you informed, we're a little off track, but we're not really off track. So, just, I'll look for feedback in any way, shape or form is great. And we'll go on from there. Any questions about that?
Kathy, are, are you going to, or, or do you want me to get that questionnaire together and get it distributed to everybody? Or I, I'm just not sure.
Not for the mid-year review.
Okay.
But that is, and I think Jenny, you said you might reach out to Tricia about designing or improving or duplicating in some way, but that would be, that would be for, like Eric, correct me for, for like an, a March product? Is that what we'd be looking at?
Or did you send it on, did the schedule say February that we're supposed to?
Well, the review should happen in the month of April, if I'm correct. So, that means we have to have it ready by March. So, you would need to, you know, begin that process when you see fit to have it on schedule.
Process usually starts in January. Start gathering the feedback through January, February. Gets discussed in, in March. Any changes that are needed are made and then either at the end of March, start of April is usually target date for delivering it.
But I think what, what Tricia put together was so efficient, it doesn't have to, you know, drag it out. I think we've got a little bogged down. And sometimes somebody waits for one trustee who doesn't get around to it. I mean, we, we have not been very efficient in the past. And thanks to Tricia, we have an instrument that allows much more efficiency. So, I would think if, if you're comf- if your committee was comfortable having something in hand by, let's say, February 15th, then you guys can come up with a timeline that everybody agrees on. Because that was, Janie, Bill, as I reflect on the process, and John, you were involved last year. It really was, it was a questionnaire, it was a numerical rating, a number of comments, and then the analysis, although I can't speak for it because I didn't do it, but it's pretty straightforward. It just seemed really efficient and very productive from what we were looking for. So, kind of keep with, with that. So.
Thank you. And I did follow up with Tricia and up to Jenny, but I haven't, I haven't been able to connect with Tricia yet. But Jenny has all the notes from last year. So, I think she, she has a great archive of all of the stuff that they did last year. So, I, I think we can replicate it all of it pretty easily.
Excellent.
I don't know how much stuff I have for the mid-year review. I've got a lot of good stuff with the, the.
Yeah, the menu, mid-year review really is quite informal. And we wouldn't need to have any of this discussion, except we technically don't have any goals to reflect on. So, Eric and I didn't want to have some artificial discussion that someone say, well, gee, I thought we were gonna talk about this. So, I'm just laying it out. We kind of messed up on it. Yeah, your, your feedback is welcome if there's, especially if you think there is something that's being overlooked. Be, you know, straightforward with me or with Eric. So, we know to stay on track and proceed that way for the rest of the year. So, so Jenny, there's no, there's no heavy documentation mid-year unless it was a problem that everybody would know about. So, and we've never had that. So.
But I think that was everything we covered at the HR committee. I think that's a good summary. Thank you, Kathy, for all that.
Thank you.
Excellent. And our next committee that met was intergovernmental agreement. Which is a report for me.
Oh, you're gonna give it? Okay. Right ahead.
I think I'm technically still the chairperson for it.
Ah, good.
Okay. So, we met, intergovernmental agreement committee met and the main item on the agenda was to discuss the memorial brick program. The memorial bricks are the ones that are out in front of the library museum annex building. They're in. They're in kind of a, not really sure what to describe, that's, that shape, a semi-circle with a ramp around them and a few benches scattered around them. It's a lovely little space. It was originally started by the Gleet Center Library Annex Committee, which was a fundraising entity that disbanded in two thousand and three. When they disbanded, they handed over responsibility for that brick program. The maintaining of it to the museum, but with the understanding that the funds, the proceeds. So the, the money after any expenses were deducted would be split between the museum and the library. Specifically, the Friends of the Library, which were the sole fundraising arm of the library at that time. So the museum had raised concerns as, as far as their ability to continue to oversee the program. They felt that it was no longer cost efficient for them to be doing that. They had raised a couple possibilities as far as remedying that between their potentially continuing to oversee the program, but keep the funds, all of the funds that were raised. Or for the, the friends to take over management of the, the program from the museum. I talked with Melissa, who had another obligation this evening and isn't able to be with us. But she was very enthusiastic about the opportunity to, to jump in and take on that, that brick program. So that has been the route that we've gone. We discussed that at the intergovernmental agreement and came to a an understanding that we would give that a shot. So that did come with a caveat that we, it was going to be an ongoing discussion. That you know, it was not simply going to be, you know, give it all to Melissa and then just, we'll all just walk away from it. But that Melissa was gonna take a look at it, see what efficiencies we could gain, how long it was taking her and how much of her time. And then we would, you know, continue to discuss, you know, our, our options as to whether this was best, or if we should be coming at this from a different angle.
What do we sell the bricks for?
Well, they had for many years been a hundred dollars a brick. The, the Friends, not the Friends, the museum recently raised the price to a hundred and twenty-five.
Okay.
They get about a dozen of them that they sell every year.
Yeah.
So I know Melissa has a lot of ideas as far as ways that those could be used to not, not as much necessarily to, you know, get, raise a lot of money. Obviously, you're not going to raise a lot of money at a hundred and twenty-five a brick, but potentially, you know, some opportunities to recognize potential donors in the future.
Well, let's point out the, the agreement is, it was passed on to me, and that the price of the brick is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. The museum will retain fifty percent of that clear. We will take the second fifty percent, and that, our net excludes the installation cost and administration cost, which is minimal. So.
No, that's not my understanding.
You want to clarify this? Melissa told me.
That we would basically into the library's administration be doing what we've been doing, which would be that we would take the one twenty-five. We would deduct the cost for installation, and then the remaining amount would be split.
But that's, that really isn't worth it.
I, I agree with you, John.
I mean, it's a waste, it's a waste of time and energy. And, and I'm just giving my opinion. I've had some experience with brick programs and they're, they're time suckers. I mean, for that, for that, I mean, if it was gonna be five hundred dollars or seven hundred and fifty dollars per brick, and the cost was, you know, installation is fifty or a hundred dollars, then you, you're making some money, but at this level, it hardly seems worth anybody's time. Sorry.
No, and.
That's what the museum finally decided.
I think we had to sunset the program, but.
There's not much space left there. So it's, it's gonna sunset itself.
I took a good look at it yesterday. I don't think there's, you know, there's, it really is just about a border area, and they're filled in rather. I was actually surprised that the program was, was continuing because it doesn't seem to spread much, but I think it's, I agree with John, it's not, it's not, doesn't produce any particular gain to whoever does it, but certainly the entity that is managing the installation, I think, should just, it should be all or nothing. I mean, there's no real benefit to splitting half of not very much.
Right.
And.
Installational.
It's unclear now, is it a donation to the museum or is it a donation to the library? And, you know, it is library property, but again, it's, it's kind of like an old thing. I'm gonna put a brick for the library where the old bricks for the museum are, doesn't sound exciting. So I don't know. And truthfully, I mean, I'll go a step further. My, what I was told was then the, the installation is actually has been accomplished by one of the Friends, maybe JD, you know more about this, one of the Friends landscaper has done it. And this particular, not friend, I, sorry, one of the museum members, landscapers done the installation, and she has taken the cost as her donation to the museum. So it's unclear as to what the cost of the donation is.
I don't know anything about that Kathy. I, I don't know who that would be.
I don't know. That's, that's the information that was passed on to me from Melissa.
Maybe we just need more information.
Yeah.
You know, if we could really clarify what, what the cost is and what the revenue is and what the split is, and then we can figure out if it's worth.
The, the other thing is, is the, when you do the installation, are you installing like six bricks at a time? Is it done once every six months, or is it done once a year when they do the installation? Brick by brick?
It's not brick by brick.
Yeah.
No.
Currently, there's a backlog of maybe a half a dozen bricks. Either the brick material or the engraving process is delayed and has been for quite a long time.
Right.
So there's a backlog of bricks. My understanding is when those bricks are produced, the the fortune of those bricks will go to the museum. So however, the library will be required to get them installed. I don't see, I wasn't at this meeting. I, I don't see it as equitable or beneficial to the library at all.
As, as a point of comparison, does anyone know how much the bricks were either at the beach or in front of Village Hall? I mean, we, there's been a proliferation of donated bricks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think those were in the hundred and twenty-five, hundred and fifty dollar range.
Yeah.
Jenny, I know you had said something about having a line on a, a better price for the bricks possibly.
Yeah, the person who organizes the brick fundraiser for the Lake Bluff, the Friends of the Lake Bluff Park District offered to help us with the installation, and he also has someone that engraves them in Vernon Hills that he said, and he said they'd be happy to help us finish whichever bricks that we have, and and I'm sorry, let me see if I can find the cost that he had, because he did give me all the costs. Sorry. Okay, so, sorry. The engraving was done by impressions in stone, and it's twenty-two dollars for the engraving. And that John, and John Hirsch said that Krugel Cobble would be happy to help with the labor of the installation of the bricks.
So by my, the explanation that I received, which was, Eric and I disagree on that, but would be that we would net half, which is sixty-two less twenty-two, which is, we're down to forty, and then there's still installation costs. And we're paying Melissa fundraising costs to, you know, to net whatever's left over. I don't know, I, I think, you know, I haven't signed an intergovernmental agreement to this issue. So I, I think maybe we should fact find a little more. I have our opinions.
Well, the, we have another meeting in January, right? And so, yeah, we could find out particulars and then report at the January board meeting.
Jenny, who would be the point person at the museum?
Ah, you know, I'm not sure. I think Beth Kepner did it for a long time, and Beth moved out of town. And then.
Adrian Fawcett's the one doing it.
Yeah, Adrian's been doing it. I don't know if it's just been too much of an effort for her. I, I should ask her, because, you know, it really doesn't seem like it would be that big of a deal, but there must be some aspect to this that I'm missing out on.
Well, and, and I'm, I'm hearing this like third person, but Melissa's explanation to me was clouded because she said she kept, Adrian kept quoting Kathy. And Melissa, at first thought it was me, I said, no, no, that would be probably Kathy McKechnie or possibly Karen. So understandably, our, our Melissa was, you know, not in a good position to judge this, because she had no idea who, who was making the call on any of this. So I think we need to
Yeah.
kind of go back to the drawing board.
I'll see what I can find out, alright?
Great.
Melissa's been in touch and we're in the, with Adrian as, as far as the information. So we're, we're into our fact finding phase. Gathering information about the, the program and what, you know, the handling of it looks like.
Good.
So, and then as Jenny noted, then, you know, we've got another intergovernmental agreement committee meeting coming up in January.
Well, let's be sure our board has a, an opinion as to what's a good plan for the library board. Before, you know, agreeing to, I mean, it's great if we can shape a new agreement, but if it's something that's just not, we've got a lot, we got a lot on our plate, so. Want to be sure that our work is productive.
Okay. So that was the intergovernmental agreement committee meeting. Let's see, and then we had, we had covered the technology visits. I think we're going to be getting set up a technology committee meeting here shortly to discuss those. Do we have any reports on community engagement? Otherwise, long-range plan, I know John, you and I had discussed that, and that we want to get a, a long-range planning committee meeting set up. Okay.
This sort of feeds on that. Where, where is our survey planning? Is there a survey planning?
Um. Sort of. Martha, you want to jump in as far as the status of the survey?
Which survey? The mini survey?
Yeah, the one that we were gonna do this fall.
Um, I had drafted questions and sent them out, and that was the last I'd heard.
Sorry, sent them out where?
I had given them to, Eric and I had drafted questions because we had not heard anything from the trustees.
You know, actu- actually Kathy, this might be one you and I discuss at, at the end of the meeting.
Okay. That's great. I just, I just kind of wanted to say this, but aside from many, many, many versus sexy, there was a point we, we're overdue for our, you know, semi-annual buy-in, or whatever it is we used to do. So I just wonder what we anticipate now that we're, you know, the library's up and well again, what's, what we anticipate? Let's say for twenty twenty-two, is there gonna be a full-on survey and all that?
That I'm planning on starting the drafting process for that in January.
Great, great. And you know, Martha, as long as you're there, Melissa may reach out to you. Eric and I were just referencing a lot of really positive data that we had gleaned from your most recent survey. So she may reach out to you. We, you know, we had told her the, all the positive statistics and so forth. She may want to get ahold of that for her presentation, so that's where that's coming from, if she talks to you.
We had. We've gotten the ball rolling on that one.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have some big, beautiful signs.
Great.
Okay. And then we'll take to our new business. First item of which is the levy. And I have some information included for you here in your packet. One is a short director's summary as far as some of the calculations that we've put into this. As well as the information packet that includes the numbers that Bettina calculated, as well as what she presented to the. Oh, for our newer trustees, the way that the process works is that the library board votes to approve its own levy. And the village does not get an, an override on that, despite us being a component unit of the village. But the, the final approval of the library's levy is the, the final approval of the, the village board's vote. That's the one that sends it off to the county for implementation. Is it more complicated than it probably needs to be? Yes, it is. But that is the system that the state of Illinois has gifted us with. And it, it does offer independence as, as far as the elected trustees of the library making a decision that is most appropriate for this institution. So in, in terms of where that levy each year gets set at, there is a, an extension limit that is a calculation that all taxing entities within the state of Illinois, Illinois calculate each year. You put a number of factors, including EAV for the community and the CPI factor, Consumer Price Index into a calculation that tells you the percentage that is the maximum you can increase your levy. While the most communities in Illinois can't go higher than PTO, that rule doesn't actually apply to Lake Bluff, because Lake Bluff is a home rule community. Which means that the taxing entities in Lake Bluff can set the levy extension each year wherever they would like it to be. But the village made a promise that it would not go beyond PTO, and they have always adhered to that. And generally wanting to be fiscally careful and be good partners and working with the village. Usually the library follows suit unless we have a particular reason not to. Which has happened twice, where the library had some facilities issues that caused us to say, you know, we need to, we need to rethink just doing a straight PTO increase. So the discussion on the levy this year was pretty straightforward. The village is opting to go with that PTO increase, which as calculated by Bettina is a one point seven nine four percent increase that would result in a projected levy extension of one million thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. That is May first, twenty-two to April thirtieth, twenty-three. So the finance committee met earlier this month and voted to recommend to the full board that we accept the PTO extension for the next fiscal year. So that is the recommendation from the finance committee. So that is the recommendation from the finance committee in front of the board tonight. Uh, Bonnie, uh, Jenny, I, I know there was kind of a whirlwind, uh, tour of the, uh, a lot of local history on the levy. If you'd like to go into more detail about that, I'm, am happy to, to meet with you and we can discuss more. It is a theoretically simple process that somehow has been made very complicated. So any questions, comments on the levy? Oh, I, I should mention that as part of the levy process, it's basically the start of our budgeting process. I do always create our first draft of the library's next fiscal year budget, uh, as part of this. Um, looking top to bottom at contracts, uh, work that we have projected to do next year, salaries, et cetera. And, um, so that can be factored in as far as what we're looking at, um, since you get used to it, but the, um, there's no denying that the levy budget process feels a little backwards at times, uh, where you're asked to set how much money you're going to have and then, you know, and then set your budget.
Eric, what's a preliminary date? What's a date for a preliminary budget completion?
Uh, budget, we just need to have that, we just need to have that done before the next fiscal year starts.
Okay.
So we've
We're usually working out by now, aren't we?
Um, yeah, the, the, the first draft gets done now. Uh, December will be the first budget discussion with the finance committee. And then January will be the first presentation to the full board.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, and then then after that approval happens, however fast or slow we want it to happen, depending on what numbers we're waiting for. But, yeah.
Eric, um, just a curiosity, um, has it ever happened that the, the PTO uh, has been zero? Has that, has that ever happened in, since you've been involved in budgeting?
I'm not sure. It is not. Short answer. Um, I think theoretically it would probably be possible, but you would really need a lot of factors to zero out, including I think the EAV.
That's what I was wondering about because it's probably tied in with, with that, isn't it?
Yeah.
But our EAV okay, did it go down? Um, the, the EAV for the entire village went up because of revaluing of, of the commercial properties, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's new construction. Um, so there's a, a couple of different, my understanding is there's a couple of different pieces to the EAV. Uh, there's the, the total assessed value, but there's also broken out within that. There's new construction within the community. So it is possible to have a, a situation as well where your EAV levels may be a bit static. But, you know, if, if you've got new construction where those taxes are going to be applied, um, you know, perhaps even for the first time, you know, if it's, you know, straight up, you know, there wasn't anything on the property previously. Then, uh, you know, you know, that's all factored in. Uh, usually what I've seen is that, um, when um, a freeze of the levy is discussed, most frequently what, what that means is setting that CPI factor at zero. But even setting the CPI factor at zero, usually there, there's still some, um, increase that happens from running that calculation just because of the way that the EAV is considered. Other questions or comments on the levy? Otherwise, I would look for a motion and let me read out loud what the motion would be. Uh, so that we can have that in front of us. Uh, the motion would be that the board approve a levy extension of $1,032,713 for fiscal year 22, 23, which represents a PTO increase of 1.794%.
I'll move.
Can I second if I'm on the point?
Motion from John, second from Bill. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, trustee George.
Sorry, just before the roll call, give me, can you give me the dollar amount again? One, zero, three, two.
I'll do you do you one better and I'll put it on the screen here.
Thank you. Thank you, got it.
Excellent. Okay, um, so to the vote trustee George.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
Trustee Heinsman.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
All right, levy is approved. And that would take us up to the director's, uh, evaluation under new business, but we've already discussed that. So that will instead take us up to, um, any discussion of the, um, email that we had received from a community member.
Eric, did you get a, a sense of what it was that she was, what service it was? She was hoping to find and did not find it at our library? I mean, I, I got the feeling it was important, kind of getting a book from another library, her library loan or something.
I, I think what she was particularly looking for was the, uh, the CCS union catalog. Um, if you've ever searched from, for an item at either Highland Park or Lake Forest, they're, they're part of a co-op. Um, where, um, among other things that, um, tie them together, uh, in terms of their operations. They, uh, they have a single catalog that you can go in and, um, if the item isn't present at your library, um, it will show you where it is and you can pretty easily, um, click and request and it'll get sent over. Um, it is materials that travel basically through the exact same interlibrary loan bags. Um, as everything else, it's just on the user and the patron side of things, a bit easier making the request. Um, we, we did cover, uh, with her that she still very much has access to interlibrary loan. Um, and that, that's very much something that, that we can do, um, at, at some point here with our um, integrated library system contract, uh, coming up in two or three years. Uh, we'll want to be taking a look at, um, whether a consortium would be, um, an advantageous, uh, direction to go. The last time that we had looked at CCS, uh, since that's the big consortium in the area, uh, the, the annual cost to be a part of that was $70,000. So we had, we had looked at that and he said, well, that's nearly, um, at, at the time it was nearly 10% of our annual budget and he said, you know, it might do a lot for us, but it's too high a price. So, um, you know, we'll be following up, um, and we'll also be taking a look to see if there's other, um, consortium opportunities in the area that might be a possibility. I believe Deerfield and Cook Memorial, um, are part of something called the LinkedIn Consortium. So that might be one to consider as well.
I was gonna say, are they, are there any cheaper options to be in the consortium rather than the one that was 70 grand? Like you just mentioned Cook and Deerfield.
Yeah.
Would they be less or that's something to investigate?
And they, they are less. Um, I want to say the last time we had followed up with them, which was back in about 2014. Um, it was in the neighborhood of between 20 to $30,000 per year. Which is a lot more manageable, but still at the time was a bigger commitment than we, um, you know, had at hand to make. Though, you know, if, if we plan far enough ahead, that, that is probably the range that we could potentially somewhere down the line make a commitment to. If we feel that the reward, um, the payoff would be sufficient for the community.
Yeah, I would just offer, I, obviously there's a financial downside to, you know, making sure that we are never caught short in the eyes of our patrons. Um, however, I have been approached by patrons who are great library users and big supporters of library. And, and it may be exactly this, they, um, I was at a reading power benefit a couple of weeks ago and a few came up to me and said, you know, Kathy, I don't really know what it is. But we were at one of the libraries and they said, oh no, Lake Bluff doesn't do that. So it wasn't as though, it, we, obviously they were trying to find a book. And instead of being told in a professional fashion, you know, blah, 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 uh, just, oh no, lot, so it, it, it's, it's the message sometimes. And I don't know how we can, except to be aware of that. And if a patron comes forward to find out, and I said to my friends, what library was it? And do you know what service you were talking about? And they had no clue. They just had asked for something and the, the answer was, oh, Lake Bluff doesn't do that. So that wasn't helping them or us in any way. So I think if, if it's all possible to, you know, pin, where, what library, what, what exactly were you asking for? And then we can at least, I mean, I couldn't have answered the question, but I know I could have walked right in and tell me, you know, this is what's going on. I could have followed up. So, um,
Yep.
You know, and I, and I get that people standing at desk and they might, but I wouldn't want them to think that we're just, oh, you know, we're just the signpost of it there from Lake Bluff, it just doesn't work or something. I mean, that wouldn't be helping us out at all.
No, I, there's, there's no denying that there's a, uh, real convenience there, uh, to be, to be gained for potentially for patrons. Uh, the, the, the catalog and requesting materials works a lot more smoothly when you're, um, everything's interconnected there. Uh, and, you know, then the communities are also pulling from the same patron database. So you don't need to register your card at any of the other member libraries. They already know who you are. So definitely something that we'll be taking a look at. I would also point out that she, uh, she mentioned that, uh, wanting us to go find free.
I didn't, I didn't catch that. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that, that's a part that I also wanted to get a little reaction on. I, I know, you know, last one, I think Kathy mentioned it and then the finance committee took a look at it. Um, I, I apologize. I really, I, I'm not sure if we're, we were looking for a specific recommendation from the finance committee.
The recommendation, um, that was sought and provided from the finance committee uh, was to prepare specific, possible changes to policy and procedure. Uh, so that there would be something, uh, more concrete, uh, on the table to, to discuss further. So it wa- it was basically a, um, is this worth taking a closer look at? Conversation at the, at the last finance committee meeting and it was determined that it was. So I'll be working with, uh, other library staff to prepare that information for an upcoming finance committee meeting where those details will be discussed.
And I, I mean, I'll step right up and explain my point of view because, um, I was the, this, I, I did not dissent in terms of making a change to find free. I simply abstain. And my, my objection has absolutely nothing to do with the principle of, of fine free. I know that's where, where libraries are going. That's great. I just can't, um, in good conscience right now, turn my back on a revenue source. So I, I wanted to simply abstain until more data was out there. Looking at this month's, looking at this passport program, this is what I want to see. Because when we talked about this a year and a half ago, then I'll came to a screeching halt and walking away from a few thousand dollars a year is a lot of money to us. But if we can begin to have confidence in other revenue sources that make up for it, then it's probably a good go. But, you know, I'm, just because something is cutting edge and popular, doesn't mean we can risk our finances. That's our primary purpose as a, as a, as a board. So Eric's doing a good job of trying to figure out how to make it work. So that's where we are.
And, and I, I would ask maybe to that end, because there was something that caught my attention when we went through, um, the budget, you know, the financial reports. There is a other income or other revenue line that for the year is budgeted at a thousand, but year-to-date actuals are at 6,500. Maybe Eric, can you, can you elaborate on exactly what that is? So we can better understand, is that something that we think would repeat year after year? Cause my concern is maybe the passport fees, you know, your passport's good for 10 years. I don't know if we're always going to be running ahead on collecting payment for, for passports.
I think that passport revenue is going to prove to be pretty sustainable, um, in, in, in terms of the volume there. Um, I, I don't foresee unless something really out of the blue happens, uh, with the state department that we're going to need to worry too much about, um, inconsistency with that revenue. Uh, as far as the miscellaneous revenue, uh, that actually is reimbursement to the library from the foundation. Uh, one of the things that we are going to be making is an adjustment to our budget. Uh, when I put that in front of the trustees, um, is going to be, uh, an additional revenue line to make that clearer. Uh, cause I think it's a little murky at the moment. Uh, miscellaneous revenue is, as, as you noted, it, what is it? Um, in, in this case, uh, while there's some other, a few other small, uh, revenue things in there, I believe, flash drives and earbuds, um, and other, you know, minor sales that we sometimes make are included in there. But the bulk of that, um, is the, uh, foundation reimbursing for expenses um, such as those for Melissa Williams' salary. So the way that those are accounted for is that, um, the library handles, um, expenses like that, and then the foundation reimburses the library. But as noted, not currently very transparent, needs to be fixed. Uh, another potential revenue source that, um, you know, I know we wish would be clear as well as those, uh, Naperville uh, fees, uh, but those continue to be pretty irregular. But, uh, it does look like, uh, the passports, um, look to be a very regular and pretty substantial addition, uh, additional revenue source. And we've got the license renewals going as well, and those should, once they really get ramped up, um, be a new reliable source as well.
So how do we make money on that? I, I, up until this point, I've kind of assumed it was a pass through and provided as a service.
The passport or, or not, that's the license. So the state of Illinois, um, in the interest of providing people with more opportunities than going to one of its secretary of state offices, um, to obtain certain services licensed to certain companies within the state. You know, that they can market, uh, and offer to the public these, um, these services. And they do that obviously because the state then grants that they can mark up the price slightly. Um, in this case by $9.50. So what those firms, um, of which I think there's about, um, a half dozen or so of them, then do is then they work with outlets such as libraries. You know, or other commercial outlets and say, you know, we'll set you up so that you can sell these and you can keep, um, you know, $8.50 of the, of the funds and then we'll keep a dollar. And, you know, then they work with enough organizations and partner with enough people that all those dollars then add up. And obviously it's a pretty attractive deal, um, you know, if you're on the, on our end. And, you know, as far as the information that we've put out there, we try and be as transparent as we can as far as the, the cost on it. You know, there, there's still very much seems to be some interest there. Folks that are, aren't interested in making the trip to the, to the DMV that, that feel that the additional charge is, uh, worth it, if there are other choice would be standing in line.
We're talking about the little sticker that goes on our, our license plate. Yeah. So what is, what, what was the, how much should we, or what's our monthly income from that right now? And what's budgeted?
I think we've sold about five of them so far. So I think we're only up on to like, um, about two weeks in. So, uh, we're not off to a, a roaring start, um, by, by any means, but, um, we have got a lot of positive feedback on it. So, um,
Line, I mean, the, the turnaround from the state's pretty quick, actually.
Yeah.
We, I just got my sticker probably within 10 days of, so
Yeah.
A little competition there, but the, the passports of the, the A little competition there, but the, the passports are the, the standouts, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Ju- just as a point of reference again from Prospect Heights and they say their population's fourteen thousand. They're expecting based on what they've seen so far, about seventy five thousand dollars in revenue from passports.
Oh, wonderful.
I mean, they. So, I mean, they, they. As part of some of the reports as well, they had an automated telephone line that filtered people through, so. By the time they came to an actual person, they should have all their documentation together. So it, it takes away from somebody being on the phone. Do you have this? Do you have?
Yeah.
So it's, and, and a checklist as well, so um, I think Katie and Jillian got a copy of one of those.
Yeah, and um, but, yeah, to that point, how are we advertising? We've gone over this, but are we at? This Chamber of Commerce now we're doing this, I presume we're flooding the.
The uh, the license renewal?
Yeah, no, the passport.
Passport. Chamber of Commerce, we've uh advertised through the, through the village. Uh, Glenn put out a, a blurb in the uh newsletter at one point for us. I don't think we've gotten a link from their website yet specifically for passports, but I've been kind of. Trying to get them to put that there, that, you know, Village Passport Service, if you're interested. Um, you know, link on through from here. I think that would be a lovely, fantastic thing uh for the village to do that. Um, so hopefully they will be able to get that in place. We had put out, um, I believe some, some press releases and um, you know, really tried to push the information out there when we got the program up and going. Um, I'm. Unfortunately, a little hazier on the details at the, at the moment, since I think we're actually into our third year now. Um, on, on the service. Is that correct, Martha? Are we? We completed through three years of this now?
This is our third year technically, it's our, it's only our, it might actually be, no, oh yeah, yeah, sorry, third year. Um, and we're also on the um, the state department has like a little. Service finder thing where you type in your zip code and it gives you a list of like the closest places to you and I think. I, I would estimate that probably the bulk of our traffic is coming from that.
Yeah. Probably the, based off of the trends and in traffic through probably the. The main um cap for us is going to end up being staff time. That there, there's only so much um staff time that we can divert to um doing the passport applications before it becomes. A challenge. But, I don't know, seventy, seventy thousand, Anna, Martha, Katie, what do you, what do you think? Are we up to the challenge?
I mean, we're on track for sixteen based on the uh elaborate spreadsheet that nobody asked me to make. Um, so we're in, you know, typically we've pulled in about ten, so we are quite a bit ahead.
Okay. All right, any other passport questions, Kathy?
No, thanks. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the clock here. I'm, we tried to get.
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah.
We've had a very full meeting this evening.
We have, we have.
So um, I will follow up uh with the, the patron that sent us uh the, the email here that I shared this evening and let her know that. Uh, the board received and the board uh was able to discuss at their meeting this evening. So we're, we're always, it's always good to hear from members of the community. What they're looking for, uh what sort of services and improvements could improve their experience. On that note. Um, I will. Uh, jump ahead. Oh, actually, uh.
Wonder if you want to.
Almost forgot the old business, almost forgot the old business.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you want to um send Melissa's notes to everybody. Um, unless John has something about fundraising that you'd like to add, we, we could move on from that.
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay, so Eric will, we just received. Today with like bullets on where, where she's at, so we'll send that out to you. If you have any questions, please follow up with Eric or with me or with John. Or with Melissa.
So um, and then director's report, only other thing that I would add would be that uh we've been very busy. So the uh, as, as you can see, the, the, the check, uh, the checkouts of materials are. Um, well above where we were in, in twenty nineteen uh for the same month. And just the programs, uh initiatives, uh the partnerships with the schools. You know, the. Things that uh we, we've picked up, some of them on very short notice. For which staff deserve an incredible amount of credit uh as, as well as keeping going. Uh, a number of our pandemic services such as curbside pickup, um, remote documents, remote printing. Staff deserves a lot of credit. Uh, people are working very hard, we're very busy. Wonderful staff that I think the community can be very proud of. So on that note, uh, I think we're up to the, towards the end of the meeting here.
Eric, were you going to uh ask about the Wednesday? Before Thanksgiving?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. If, unless there's any objection, um, I know that the, the trustees had discussed and moved towards for twenty twenty two. Um, closing um at six o'clock rather than nine o'clock on the day before Thanksgiving.
Oh, why?
It was five o'clock.
We'll take six, Martha. We will take six if, if, if six is on the table. Um, but moving towards doing that for twenty twenty one as, as well, it's usually incredibly quiet that evening.
Sure.
Okay.
I personally don't think five o'clock is a reasonable. I, I was just going to say the same thing.
Five it is, there we go.
You gotta get those ovens warmed up.
That's right.
Absolutely. It's turkeys don't gonna, turkeys aren't gonna cook themselves. I've tried to teach them, but they, they won't learn.
They won't do it.
No. Okay. That then should be everything.
Okay, the only one thing I was gonna say, Jenny, I apologize, we were gonna talk about the volunteer program and we really are, it's getting late for everybody. Um, and I know that your family has been dealing with all sorts of things, so. Would we offend, we, you, if we asked you to wait until December and to listen?
No, that's great, cause I have some up, I'll, I have to do some re-updating since.
Well, Melissa said you were kind of on hold with it, so that's terrific, but again, it, it, it was our oversight, as you can see, there was just a lot of the. The, the audit is always a big month for us, so.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for your patience.
No, that works out perfectly, thank you.
Good, well, we'll, Eric, be sure she's about the very beginning of the agenda next month.
That's good. Okay, uh, then I think we're. Up to a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned at nine PM.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Everybody, happy Thanksgiving.